All right, gentlemen, this brings us to item number two, approval of agenda. You've received the agenda in advance. I'll entertain a motion at this time to accept.
Sub move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. All those in favor of accepting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, we have a presentation on the docket today. This comes from Sheriff Steve Weston. Afternoon, Sheriff.
Just want to thank you for the opportunity to recognize one of our detention officers who was selected in all of North Carolina as the 2018 Detention Officer of the Year. I would like to be able to present him to the Board at the regular meeting, and I appreciate you not making me reveal his name until today. He did not know that he was going to win this award. Last week, he was at the conference, North Carolina Jail Administrators Conference, and his name is William Allen Kincaid, and I'll have him here at the regular meeting and then share some of his accomplishments and why he was chosen as the 2018 Detention Officer of the Year.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. That sounds great. Any questions on this matter?
Yes, sure.
We look forward to that presentation, and we appreciate you bringing that to us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff. Item four on the agenda is scheduled public hearings. We have several public hearings to consider. The first one comes from our county manager on development incentive grant and public hearing. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. We have an applicant for the development incentive grant for a project here in Morganton, and I'd like for David, he is one of the applicants for this, to come up and go over the project, and if the Board has questions, answer questions.
All right.
Afternoon. Afternoon. Thank you so much for taking the time to see me and also to consider this grant application.
You want to go ahead and maybe just give us a brief summary of your project?
Absolutely. I'll be as brief as I can. I actually started working on this project with my development partner, Mike Corin, almost five years ago. This has been something which has been seen as a need in Morganton and Burke County as far as additional hotel room supply and also an elevated presence in the community. That's only been enhanced over the last five years due to the general improving economic conditions of our region, as well as additions of items such as the school science and math is a good example. Through this process, we have, we're trying to do something which has not been done before, which is always difficult. To our knowledge, this is the largest private development in downtown, in the CBD in downtown Morganton's history, and because of that, there's no real comps for what is being done. So throughout the process, we have had to really create a model or a paradigm that does not currently exist. In doing so, we have brought on an investor pool, but roughly 50% are local, 50% are outside the area. For those local, it's convincing them to invest back into Morganton and into Burke County, and for those from outside the area, it's convincing them to why Burke County is a great place to actually invest money. And so that was one of our first steps from there. Secondly, we're getting Marriott involved in the project and convincing them as far as to why our area is need, is in need for additional hotel rooms, as well as how it's going to help out their flag or their brand. As you probably know, they're one of the largest hotel chains, if not the largest hotel chain in the world, so having them buy into our area is a great, call it an efficacy test for our market. And from there was following that would be bank financing, and so having them get comfortable with the project, comfortable with the numbers and returns was part of that process. Much of that information, which actually led to the performance, was from third-party independent analysis, which is vetted by Marriott, as well as the, as well as the bank, Live Oak Bank, in the process. So that's not our generation as far as occupancy and potential room rate per night. Those are actually from a third-party independent study done. And so this is just another step in that process for us. As I'm sure you can imagine, a project of this magnitude in comparison to what exists in the marketplace is, is not, not the easiest thing to do in the sense that it really takes a public-private partnership to make these, these items happen. You know, for us, as I mentioned before, you know, having a investor return so that the outside investors who are investing into Burke County can realize that return and also reinvest in this community is important, but more importantly than that is actually meeting our debt service coverage ratios, which is laid out by in our financing terms. We're expected to close that loan in two weeks, but a key point of that for us to make that debt service coverage ratio is the, is the grant. And so that is where it's been very vital for us to achieve this for the project, how it meets the BUT4 test, if you will. But in the packet you received, there's also just to get a sense of the need for this project. It's not strictly a Morganton-related thing. The, the letters of support we have are from a large cross-section of the community, many manufacturing organizations throughout the county who have need for everyone, thing from customers, sales reps, vendors, you name it, who are coming to the area, and unfortunately, they're not staying here. They're staying somewhere else. You know, anecdotally, there was two large events this weekend that had people of 180 people on Saturday and 1,000 people on Sunday, that there were, every hotel room that was available was taken up, and that was not even enough. Speaking to some bank examiners in the area last week, two were staying at hotels they felt were inferior, and one was staying in Boone and commuting down to Morganton every day. So those things are happening right now in our community. And beyond, obviously, from the manufacturing sector, we also have the hospital who has voiced support, as well as Kevin Baxter from the school of science and math. So it's not strictly one area of our community, it's all across. And additionally to that, we are currently looking at a reduction in inventory potentially. One is due to a eminent domain situation, Exit 103, as well as some other potential problems happening with hotels losing their flags coming up, which again diminishes that supply. So many needs, you know, when we were presented the dig grant and read through what the, what the dig is trying to achieve, it seems to us that on every point, there's actually nine points in here, and on every single one, it's, it's a yes or no question, we're emphatic yes, as far as achieving the, the goals of the dig and also achieving the goals, our economic goals locally to the community.
Okay, thank you, David. Gentlemen, you've had all this information before you. Any questions for David on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I had four questions. As I went through the information, three of those four questions got answered. Somebody did a lot of good work on this. Whoever did this presentation needs a big pat on the back, but I do have some concerns. And if you gentlemen want to follow on page, I believe 54, one of my questions was, how did we arrive at the amount of money and how did we arrive at the 85%? And it, it puts it in black and white there for you, but it still brings some concern to me. And Brian, I think I'm correct, we've never given that larger percentage of 85% on tax, tax incentive heretofore. I don't know if I'm correct or not, but I don't remember it if we did.
We've only had one other dig project since I've been here. I think that was a smaller project, and this one is estimated it being in excess of 12 million, so it qualifies for a large project that goes to that kind of a calculation for a sharing of the incentive back to, to the investors. So that's, that's part of the dig policy. And again, this is all going to be, be required to show the investment above what the value of the property is now. Danny in the tax office will have to be involved in that to give us what the final number, new investment number is, but this, this is in accordance with the established policy.
I have to interject there as well. As far as the total project value is over $13 million. The property value is expected to be, based on our research we've done with the county, to be roughly $8 million as far as a property value. The current property value on that piece, that parcel is around $230,000, so the increase is over $7 million just in the primary property increase. That does not also take into account, obviously, the increases as far as occupancy taxes and sales taxes, which are, which are then spread throughout the county. So the economic impact directly related to property value is a little over $7 million, but then the primary and secondary downstream effects obviously can be magnified from there.
Yeah, I think, my, my whole reason for the explanation and to ask the main question here was just simply that it's such a precedent that I was wondering if it could be altered. I think y'all get $35,800 and some dollars, county gets $14,000 for those first five years. My question was, can we alter that and go seven years or eight years and bring that percentage back into perspective a little bit? Go 65 or whatever it would work out, 65, 35.
The, I think the city has already acted on, on this in the, in the format that's we're considering now. I don't know, Mr. Taylor, if we go changing things after the policy's already been set.
Well, I, you know, I'm, I'm all for the project.
Thank you so much.
I would like a little bit of equalization for the county on it, just.
I, I would say when you actually look at the numbers and then extend them out past the five years to the 10 years, 15 years, et cetera, there is, the increases are dramatic over time there. As you can see, once that five-year period is up, all of that is going to the county. And so the idea of these, this grant is it's completely based on a reimbursement of future tax revenues, and so it's for, it's not off of, there's, the downside risk is only exists if, no payment's made to us effectively if the project does not happen, and so it's all based off of future growth and future revenues there.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, that was my concern and my question. We got two weeks till we vote on it. If it can't be changed, it can't be changed. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Any other questions, comments on this side?
Just a, just a general comment, Mr. Chairman. I'd mentioned earlier the same thing you'd mentioned, a great presentation. I mean, once we got the information, you know, I think it's a win-win for everybody involved. I think the numbers that were run, I think it was city staff calculating conservatively using 62% occupancy, you know, with the downtown hotel being involved with the TDA, I'd say that 62% is on the really low side. I think you could probably bump that up by 20 points, so I think the numbers are justified.
Thank you, sir. We were, we were conservative on purpose, obviously, for all of our calculations, and again, as I said before, everything we've done so far has been vetted by, by multiple individuals, including Marriott and Live Oak Bank, in the sense that we've been, we've been put to the rigor on this to make sure it's accurate, so.
Any other questions on this matter? Mr. Manager, any other comments?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a comment too. This is definitely a win-win for Morganton and Burke County, and I'm very pleased at where we're at. You mentioned in your summary information here about other hotels losing their flags. Is that something in Morganton currently that might, might lose their flags? Would that, that's going to enhance what you're doing anyway, correct?
In theory, correct. And so realistically, right now, our initial reports on what the market could bear from the STAR report, which is one of the attachments here, is not really indicative of the business we're seeing that's wanting to come here. And what I mean by that is, there was a lot of comparables in the marketplace that were, quite frankly, very low-end, and so they were, you know, $30 to $40 a night in that range, which isn't really what the individual coming here, either from a manufacturing basis or from a tourism basis, is looking for in the community. So as those trend down-market, it definitely, for us, it's almost, it's apples and oranges in the sense where we do not see that as a competitive force as far as what we're doing. On the bright side, for other hotels in the air that could be seen as comparable to us, having someone come into the marketplace to then potentially bump up that nightly rate only helps them out and increase what they're doing as well. You know, what we like to see is this be a catalyst for, for, for what could happen in Morganton. A very similar situation happened in Asheville when someone did their first new hotel downtown, and it was successful, and then from there, additional developers came on board as well. So you're looking at that from there, increases in projects, property values, et cetera, that all go along with that initial catalyst. So to your point, though, it's not going to affect what we're doing. It might, it may even help us, but it's not really a comparable marketplace.
Let me ask you one more thing, being a little bit nosy, I suppose. So as of today, all of our financial obligations, are the, all the financials that you're associated with are in good order, because I see you asked for a bridge loan from Morganton last night.
Correct.
So does that put everything where you need it to be right now?
It, it does. So basically, we have two hurdles here, one of which is, is this on the county level and the next is our closing, and they're all linked together. Our, our closing was based on, initially, there was a HUD development, small business loan, which was based on, initially, it was understood to be as part of our closing with the bank, and in actual fact, it's at, at the time of, sort of taking occupancy at the end of the project. And so there was just a gap there which needed to be covered in order to make that debt service coverage ratio work, which it does. And so, yes, to your short answer, yes, we are, we are good to go.
Okay. Thank you, David. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Other questions, comments? All right, here and now, this item will remain on the agenda without objections. David, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Item number two comes from Community Development Zoning Amendment ZTA 2018-02 and Public Hearing. This will be presented by Scott Carpenter, our Deputy County Manager and Planning Director. Afternoon, Scott.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen, Madam Thorpe, Ms. Margaret. This item you are familiar with is zoning text amendment 2018-02. This came before you, and then it went back to the planning board, so I'm going to be briefing my comments this afternoon, and Mr. Todd Binick is here as well. He won't be able to make the regular meeting, so he wanted to be able to answer any questions that you fine gentlemen might have this afternoon. So staff originally received this zoning request from Todd Binick and Carissa Parker to rezone eight parcels of land, which totaled 21 acres from its current zoning of R1 to R3 zoning district. The planning board met to hear this request, and that was back in May, the 24th, 2018. At that meeting, the planning board voted two to two to approve the rezoning request. Because the request did not garner the majority vote required for approval, the motion failed to be approved by the planning board, and the vote went without a recommendation to be forwarded to you all. The same request went before the Board of County Commissioners on July 17th, 2018. The Board of Commissioners made the decision to send the rezoning request back to the planning board for review and reconsideration as an R2 zoning district. The applicants have decided to amend their original zoning application and, and to request that the eight parcels be rezoned from R1 to R2 zoning district. If you'll, I'll just refresh your memory on a few of the items, but the parcels are accessed by Roy McGalliard Avenue, which is State Road 1279, and it's classified as a local road. The parcels are served by private wells and private systems. Two of the parcels within the rezoning applications do have structures on them. Their Carissa Parker parcel has a modular home on it, and the other parcel has a non-conforming Class A manufactured home on it. Their surrounding area is very rural, and the majority of the land is undeveloped. The land on Roy McGalliard Avenue is also mostly undeveloped, with the exception of a, two, of two single-family homes, one modular home, and three manufactured homes to the north. If you all have your maps there, you can see that there's agriculture to the north on the existing land use map, and mostly the area is vacant. There's a couple of single-family homes near these parcels, as well as some double wides and single wides, and that makes up pretty much the character of the entire district. This is in conformity with the comprehensive plan, in our opinion, and as far as conformity with the Burke County zoning ordinance, the zoning needed to be requested because of the double wide that was placed on one of the parcels would, was not allowed under R1, and it would need to be rezoned to R2. And if you look at the current zoning map, you'll see that surrounding this property is R1 zoning to the east. To the north is Conservation District Estate. To the south of it is, is R3 residential zoning, and there's a little bit of planned residential mixed use in the area as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have, or we can hear from the applicant first, and we can both answer your questions.
All right, thank you, Scott. Gentlemen, any questions for Scott? This is an item that we... Thank you. This is an item that we heard previously and referred back to the planning board, and it's coming back again with a slightly different request. So any questions? Mr. Binick, would you care to make any comments at this point or, or not?
When I failed to mention that the planning board recommended five to one to recommend approval of the rezoning request.
Any questions on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of telephone calls today. One of them lasting more than 30 minutes. There's, there's still be some, is some concerns, and I was asked this question, I could not answer it, that the rezoning was done to, to endorse something that has gone on wrong up there instead of fixing the problem that's going on. And I, I see that a little bit, as a little bit gerrymandered. I do want, I did state to this individual, and I think as a property owner, as we, if we own the property and we're within the rules and the regulations of the county, that we should be able to do practically what we want to in our land. That's what we call America the free for, and that's what we kind of pay our taxes for. However, in any area, I don't care if you live in another city, New York City, Charlotte, or out in the wide-open country, common decency and appreciation of your neighbors, you can't set up a firing gun, a drill, and shoot on the other property. So if, you know, I told them that we didn't have a nuisance law, even though nuisance would, would impact somebody's relationships with their neighbors. So I'm trying to, I went down the list a couple of times a day and trying to see the difference between R1 and R2, and, you know, I, I'm seeing very, very, the only couple things that allows a manufactured home Class A, what's Class A?
That's a double wide with siding, and no metal roofs are allowed. It has to be a shingled roof.
Do we plan to put double wides on the property?
Has a brick foundation as well.
Pardon?
Has to have a brick foundation as well. There is one double wide on one of the parcels now.
Yeah. Well, you know, from what you have presented and looking at our code of, code requirements, it's hard not to accept that R2 could be allowed there. Am I correct?
Well, that's up to you fine gentlemen to determine, but the staff did recommend approval of this because there are characteristics in the entire area of an R2 classification.
Is any other privilege with R2 over one than the double wide?
Please say, say it again.
Is there any other advantage from going from R1 to R2 than the double wides?
You can have duplexes there as well. Duplex of one unit that has two...
Duplex, okay.
Separate housing units to it, and you can also have multifamily. However, it's extremely unlikely you could have either one of those there because there's no sewer system in place. So those are more high-density type of options for closer in to town that are allowed in the R2 zoning.
Okay, I may have another question in a minute. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on this matter? Other thoughts, Commissioner Tate, before we move on?
Would you like me to kind of give you some information about the project, the property?
If you'd like, that'd be fine.
Couple of you guys have been out there to my property. The neighbors that are against me are, have a deep opinion about me and so on and so forth, but none of them have ever called me personally to, to ask me what I was going to do, except one neighbor that, that strongly does not like me. And the only recommendation I, the, what I'm asking to do has got nothing to do with why my neighbors that don't like me don't like me. So there's a, it's a mixed bag of treats there. So the long story short is, the property that I'm trying to develop is for a caretaker that they have dead-set in their mind that I'm building cottages for people to come and live there, which I have no intentions of doing, never have, never will. I have 116 acres there. I have future plans of building my own house there. I currently live in East Shores, and everything I've ever done since I started my own business and have kind of been on the steps of life, I've only wanted to better and to, I've always wanted to go first class with, and they probably would disagree with that on a couple of things, but ultimately, I have plans to, to basically redo the, the home that's there now. I've just got under contract the property that the end of the road, it says double wide and a single wide, that some demolition needs to be done there, and I demolished a single wide off the property when I bought the property on the, on my farm there. And so I have no intentions of doing the things they think I'm intend to do, and ultimately, it's a caretaker's place. I have 116 acres, and, and I just don't have time to, to take care of the place on my own, so I have future plans of my, my, I've got three kids. The three kids have the home sites picked out if they choose to, choose to build there, and if they don't, they don't. But that's my grand plan, and it has been. I'm not afraid to be dead honest with you, wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't lie to you for nothing. I do ride motorcycles on the property. That's always been the complaint of the neighbor, the one neighbor that lives almost 3,000 feet from where my main place we ride is, and then on the other end of the property, which, I'm sorry, your name again? What's your name?
Scott Muller.
Yeah, and so I took him a tour yesterday, the whole property, showed him everything, and a couple of these other guys have been out there before, and I have, there's nothing hidden. I ride dirt bikes on the property. I was a professional motocross rider, and, and none of this has anything to do with what's, what's I'm asking to do there, but that's the, the emails you guys get and the, the noise that they, they stirred up. They don't even live there anymore, the people that, that stirred up the trouble, and I, I tried to talk to the lady and work with her as a neighbor and said, hey, I will, when would be a good time for me to ride or not ride? And the only, the only answer she gave me was, go back where you come from. So I tried to be a good neighbor, and I have no intentions of ever having a motorcycle racetrack or anything else there. It's my private property. My kid is one of the best in the world, and he does ride there, and he does homeschool, and he rides there normally in the afternoon from 1:00 to 4:00, and, and, and I also ride with him, and that has nothing to do with what I'm asking to do here. Even though they're trying to mix that up with the whole ball of wax, it's, it has nothing to do with it. This is simply just rezoning that track alone, so it's, it's, it's more developable down the road for my future plan.
Mr. Chairman, from, from what I've been told, and again, I have no proof, but I assume people and take them as honest until they prove me differently. You had one neighbor to move to Catawba, and one to move to, to Catawba County.
That's correct.
And one moved to McDowell County, and most of it was because of noise, and one of them mentioned third shift or, or worked a while at third shift, and because of, and she did mention motorcycle races, anytime during day or night, they had to move to get sleep because they could, so they could work. And, and I guess my, it, I don't like to make decisions on attitudes. on attitudes and half information. And if, if we look as a group of what the law says and what those codes says, it makes it very difficult, you know, to, to make decisions based on emotions, et cetera, et cetera. So, I try not to do that. Very seldom have I done that. And that's the reason I, you know, I brought this up so that we can make a full disclosure decision on, you know, what should happen to this property. Quick example, sheriff, was not sheriff Wiston at the time, came to me at 1:00 in the morning. I was on a 20-acre field getting it ready to sow with a big K's tractor. And he said, they're going to call the sheriff on you to get you arrested if you don't quit in 20 minutes. I said, what did I do? He said, out here working. I said, well, I didn't bother. She said, she had to work and she couldn't sleep by listening to that tractor. So, I told him, I said, you tell her, give me 30 minutes and I'll be through with this field. So, but I'm just saying, you don't have to break the law for some people not to like you.
That's correct.
And you could be working real hard to survive from your own industry. And some people wouldn't like you. But just want you to understand that that's, you know, these are the calls we're getting.
I know.
And it would be nice to hear from you if we accept this and approve it, that you do look at when and where they race if somebody, especially if you've got a neighbor that works third shift.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'd like to say this. We've never rode after dark. We try to ride, when we do ride during the week, not on the weekend, because most people are home on the weekend. And most people, if you're not, if they're not retired, they would work normally a first shift. So, normally, the time would be at, on the, on the wide side would be 10 to 4:00 or 5:00 PM. We don't ever ride that. That's just a window. The typical time is we go out and ride 20 minutes and then we rest. Our, our bikes do not come with or are set up to have headlights on them. So, I know that ain't even part of the issue, but I'm an open door. If anybody wants to tour my property, they call me. I'll take you and show you the whole property. I have nothing to hide. And I have, I've been very transparent in, through this process. With, and I know there's two issues. The issue of the rezoning and then the other issue that you guys have had the issue. I will also say this. I have, and I didn't bring it with me today, but I have pictures of the area we ride. I rode there in the 90s. And I, I have pictures of back in 93. And you can get it on Google Earth if you go back to the timeline. And you can see a track laid out there on the property back in 93. And I rode there in the mid 90s and have ever since. I grew up in Nebo, so it's not something that just fell out of the sky. That's what it's, it's been tree farmed and I can, I'm continuing to tree farm and invest into the trees that I have there and, and work in that business aside of the business I do now.
Well, these gentlemen may not remember it. They may, but several years ago, I got a request to stop the train from blowing its whistle. And the people live two miles from the train track. So, you get on, but I appreciate your input and I may give Scott a call or so between now and voting down, but I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
Just one more question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bennett, for clarity's sake, that property, the most dilapidated piece that I saw was a double and a single wide at the end of that road. Now, you're in the process, just for clarity's sake, what are you going to do with that?
One of my employees, the plan would be, one of my employees, I employ about 25 guys, and I have one employee's wife and two kids that, that's looking for a place to rent, that I would probably move him into the, to the double wide. And I do have that in a contract. The single wide is another issue that I've got to figure out. And that's a little more in-depth situation, but it's on the property. And there's a guy living there and he has his own power. It's, and he rented from the people that got foreclosed on. But the bank, when, when the title search is done, they don't have a title or proof of ownership of the single wide. So, I'm either going to have to, I'm going to have to figure out how to, either he thinks he owns that, which he doesn't, but either he's going to have to be evicted and that moved and demoed. Either he'll be responsible for moving it or I'd be responsible for demo. I just got to figure out how to get, go through a lawyer and deal with that. If there's a guy currently living there, he, he's not in trouble, but he does definitely live in the single wide because the bank didn't have ownership when they foreclosed. They didn't have proof of ownership.
Of course, these aren't the properties we're talking about rezoning, but we'd mentioned those properties at the end.
Right. Those, that's the properties at the end that are, they're already zoned correctly, what I'm asking to rezone to. They just all join me. That all, it's about 11 acres there on both sides of the road. So, that was true.
All right. Thanks, Scott. Other questions, comments? All right. Here and then, this item will remain on the agenda without objection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three also comes from Community Development. It's only map amendment ZMA 2018-06. It's again presented by Scott Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is second zoning map amendment 2018-06. Staff received a rezoning application from Tracy Dale to rezone a portion of two adjoining parcels of land from its current zoning of R3 to general business zoning district. The two parcels total 7.4 acres. However, the actual acreage to be rezoned is only 3.4 acres. And you can see that on the provided maps. As far as the site goes individually, the two parcels, one is 6.4 acres and the other one is almost one acre. The larger 6.4 acre parcel has an existing agricultural building on it, but it is otherwise vacant. And the one acre parcel has an existing dwelling, garage, and an accessory structure on it. The 911 address of the parcel is 1830 US 70 West Morganton. For better, if you know where Bell Farms is on Cathy Road, it's right near there. So, it also falls in with the Interstate 40 overlay district. The parcel does have almost 665 feet of frontage along US 70, which is a minor arterial road. The parcel is served by public water only. So wastewater disposal is handled by a private onsite septic system. Their surrounding area is a mixture of vacant land, residences, a church, and several businesses. Directly to the north is a 25 acre undeveloped wooded parcel. And adjacent to that parcel is a dog breeding business. Directly across US 70 are several more undeveloped wooded parcels and a manufactured home sales lot. Further to the south is an adult care facility. You have an existing land use map available to you. And you can see that down the road is some general business as well as single family and double wides. Again, it's typical of the rural nature of Burke County, this area is. As far as the conformity with the comprehensive plan goes, this, the current land use plan for Burke County is the 2016-2030 Blueprint Burke Strategic Land Use Plan. The plan classifies this area as a secondary growth area. This designation is given to areas that lie just outside of the primary growth area and have many of the same attributes as the primary growth area, such as access to infrastructure, utilities, and transportation corridors. So, we believe that it is in compliance with our future land use plan. As far as conformity with the Burke County zoning ordinance, the current zoning district for this parcel is R3. However, the applicant intends to do a, a dog sitting and kennel business on the property, and that is not allowed in R3. And that's why the applicant is requesting the general business classification or zoning district. The planning board met August 23rd, 2018 to hear the rezoning request. And after hearing so and deliberating on this issue, they voted 6-0 to recommend approval of the rezoning request to this board. And staff also had the same recommendation, which was for approval as well as the county manager's recommendation. There is no budgetary effect with this rezoning request. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Scott on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, one, if he goes to GB, General Business?
Yes, sir.
If he decides to change from a dog kennel to something else, that takes a permit and reissue from you from the
Yes, sir. And so, they would have to come in with a new site plan and we would evaluate it, plus it falls under the I-40 corridor, which has some additional requirements for signage and other things.
That's the only question I have. Thank you.
Other questions? Right here, none of this item will remain on the agenda without objection. This brings us to consent agenda today. Item number five. First item on consent agenda is Burke County Public Schools, Mountain View School, road widening contracts and chain orders. This will be presented by Doug. That's your second. Good afternoon, Doug.
Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, commissioners. Bring for your day of the road widening project that we had for the new Mountain View Elementary School. DOT requirements that we had this road widening and these change orders brought to date in an amount of $37,441, bulk of it being storm drainage modifications, a retaining wall where there's a stream going under the road, and a sewer manhole modifications. For any questions that you have on these items for that. Thank you, Doug. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just had one. This is an increase and not a switch. Are we still in budget?
We're still in, still in budget. This was, our original contract was 759,000. This takes it to 796. And the good thing is that we're anticipating, once this project's complete, that we can get reimbursement for this money from North Carolina DOT. And we're ready to start the, this is the road work, the signal part. Should start putting a new signal in at the corner of Buchell Street and Sanford. Hopefully start that in the next week, 10 days.
Other questions? Doug, the only question I had was part of the cost from J.T. Russell and Sons for not working, if I understood it correctly, during the festival. What, what explanation did they have for needing $6,000?
When we first started designing this, our engineers with West Consultants, we were showing our plans to the city of Morganton, asked if there are any days that we shouldn't be working or anything that would hold us up. And there was nothing said at that time. When we started, started that, when the 4th of July, the Bluegrass Festival was there, they had campers. We were staging some excess soil off the road work. And beside the ball fields in Catawba Meadow Park, there were campers parked in there. We started going, we're going to use that dirt for the roadway and the expansion. We went to get it. We were told it was bothering the campers there with a lot of big campers there with dust and noise. And they told us that we had to stop work and that, I think that was on a Friday. So, they stopped us through the weekend until the next, the next week.
What if it had rained?
Pardon?
What if it had rained? You know, they'd have to stop work. You know, it just kind of bothers me to protect some, some of the costs here.
And I'd asked for reimbursement on that or some help on that. And supposedly, the city coffers are empty and could not help me with that, so.
Okay. Other questions, comments? All right. Here and then, this item will remain on the consent agenda. Thank you, Doug.
Good. Thank you.
Item number two, resolution in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This will be presented by Vice Chairman Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. National Breast Cancer Awareness Month organization is a partnership of national public service organizations, professional medical associations, and government agencies working together to promote breast cancer awareness, share information on the disease, and provide greater access to screening services. This is an annual international health campaign organized by major breast cancer charities every October. Since its inception more than two decades ago, MB CAM has been at forefront promoting awareness of breast cancer issues, education, and empowerment to women to increase their knowledge of the disease and to raise funds for research into its cause, prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and cure. As I have done in previous years, I encourage adoption of this resolution in honor of my wife, who is still in cancer remission, and her sister Nancy, who died from breast cancer in 2015. If you will note today, I'm wearing my pink pin. I would encourage all commissioners, if you still have yours, to wear that. And if not, when we come to our meeting on Tuesday, if you would wear pink, I would certainly appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Johnny. Any questions on this matter?
We, no question, but Sunday, we got announcements from one of our ladies of our church who had been diagnosed with breast cancer. So, it, I think it affects one in four families one way or the other, if I'm remembering correctly. So, need to find it if we can.
All right. Without objection, this item will remain on the agenda. Thank you, Johnny. Item number three, National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. This will be presented by Allison Asbell. Good afternoon, Allison.
Hi. Chairman, commissioners, thank you for having me. National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is a national endeavor by the National Coalition for the Homeless to promote education, action, and awareness about hunger and homelessness on behalf of Burke Cares, a collaboration of the Continuum of Care and nonprofit agencies in Burke County that address the issues of hunger and homelessness. We would like the community to be aware of the issues in our area, those who are less fortunate, and to help be an active part of the solution in addressing these concerns. Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is November 10th through the 18th this year. And in participation, Burke Cares is hosting the I Care Burke Tour, a poverty simulation and educational event to inform community members of the resources we have in our community. We appreciate the support of our county commissioners in our efforts to address hunger and homelessness here in Burke County. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Allison. Gentlemen, you've had this resolution in your package. Any questions on this matter? All right. Here and then, Allison, we'll keep that on the consent agenda without objection. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Item number four, clerk reappointment to Veteran Service Board. This will be presented by Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request to reappoint, well, to reappoint Mr. Kenneth Knite to the Veteran Service Board for a three-year term ending September 30th, 2021. He just completed his first three-month short term that ended September 30th, and he is willing to serve a full three-year term now.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any question on this item?
No deal.
Here and then, this item will remain on the consent agenda without objection. Item number five, Board of Commissioners Resolution in Support of Preservation and Economic Development of the Historic Henry River Mill Village. And this will be presented by Commissioner Taylor.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. You gentlemen have the resolution. Would you prefer I read it? Yes, no?
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Gentlemen, you've had this resolution. Mr. Taylor will be glad to read it if you like. If not, I'll ask for any questions. Here and then, this item will remain, unless you have any comments you want to make.
I appreciate it, gentlemen. Thank you.
All right. This item will remain on the agenda without objection. Item number six, Animal Advisory Board Report and Community Questions Approval. This will be presented by Donald Probst and Rebecca McCloud. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, ladies. As chairman, elected chairman of the Animal Advisory Board back this past fall, we've had a number of meetings regarding animal population in Burke County, things that are happening as far as programs to enhance that position. What we did determine, there's some points I'd like to bring out, is What we did determine, there's some points I'd like to bring out, is that we did make a visit to the Burke County Animal Shelter. In our visit there, we determined that it was well-run, that it was a clean environment, and primarily served as an enforcement center. Most of the animals that were held were because of biting or aggressive behavior, and we understood and recognized that they're currently understaffed at the shelter. They only have three officers with over 500 square miles to cover in Burke County and an intake of 300 to 350 animals monthly during peak times, which is summer, June, July, August timeframe. We also recognize there are currently no pet licensing requirements, and therefore no revenue generated to assist with any programs such as spay or neuter. And we also, the board, recognized the voucher program currently in place by the county for spay and neuter, and its success so far has met with somewhat success, and is getting better as time goes on because of follow-up of people getting the vouchers and making sure that that actually the spay or neuter happens. But I think it's a commendable program and would like to see that enhanced as far as that program to enable people to get their pets spayed and neutered at a very low cost or no cost. We've had many discussions, and I mean many, regarding pet licensing and the county's past experience with pet licensing, which I understood was handled by the tax office at that time and was not well-received by the commissioners. I have made personally contact with several other counties regarding this and their success with third-party administration of licensing, and the response from both Mecklenburg and Gaston Counties was very positive regarding that approach in terms of ease of handling the licensing, in terms of incentive programs for pet owners to properly take care of their animals. For example, rabies shots if you have, or spay and neuter. If you have a spay or neutered pet in Mecklenburg or Gaston County, you have like a $10 license. If you have not a spe, do not have a spayed or neutered animal, then it's like $30. So there's some incentive and disincentive to spay and neuter pets and help control population. We also, in that process, realize that there's a very severe problem in Burke County with overpopulation and irresponsible pet owners in Burke County. So we were also made aware that there was some survey money available to have a survey taken to determine what the citizens of Burke County know and feel about the problems facing Burke County regarding current animal shelter, overpopulation, and spay and neuter programs currently provided by the county. We also feel that there was some need to streamline the audit of adoptions by approved rescue organizations, and we also have reviewed the procedures and bylaws of the advisory board on September 26th, 18. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Prox. So gentlemen, you've had this information. Any questions on these items?
Mr. Chairman, I did have one. I was about to overlook it. How, what kind of impact do you think this might have on the private sector who's taking care of animals while this? I guess what I'm asking, will we take enough business away from those that they'll have to go out of business?
For spay and neuter?
Well, for, for animal care, period.
I'm not quite sure I understand the question in terms of animal rescue groups taking money away from them. I don't know that, how that could affect us one way or the other.
Well, I'm assuming, which may be incorrect, that most animal shelters offer practically the same service regardless.
They do not. Some are fosters, some are rescues, and some are true animal shelters, where they may have a full range of service, where they have to have a veterinary plan, a safety plan if you have sick animals, they have volunteers.
Yeah.
But it's not going to take away from any local, because we don't have any. I mean, there's, we've got two approved right now, I believe, that we can do audits from.
Three, actually.
Three.
Three.
Well, I see that a lot as a reason I, you know, I see we do, you know, we do shots, we do neutering, we, you know, and a lot of the.
Well, one of the requirements from when a rescue group adopts an animal from animal shelter, takes it from our county animal shelter to a private adoption or rescue facility, there, as part of the, one of the things we do is an audit to confirm that they have got their shots, that the spay and neutering has happened to those animals that come from the Burke County Animal Shelter to a rescue organization prior to it leaving that organization. And so far, our audits have confirmed that that did indeed happen.
Well, as far as your survey, I, I think it swelled that you found out how, what people think of those animal shelters and keepers.
Just from a personal standpoint, until we educate the, the pet owners of Burke County to do a better job of maintaining being a responsible pet owner, you're going to have a continual problem. But the licensing could go a long way toward helping foster that process in terms of spaying and neutering, reducing population. If, if it costs a lot more to have an animal that's not spayed and neutered, then there's a big incentive to get that, and especially if you've got a corresponding program of spay and neuter services available, then that really makes a, would make a big dent in the population. And, and, and I talked with Lieutenant Steve Massey about a number of different areas in the county that are problem areas, that, that it comes from this area. And when you've got three officers covering over 500 square miles, now, they just get the bad calls. This dog bit me. This dog's chasing my kid. They don't have time to go to the real problem areas and, and write a ticket, and, and nothing happens until there's some incentive there for those people to conform to being responsible pet owners.
Other questions? Don, you mentioned the third-party group handling the licensing. Can you expound on that?
Yeah, I contacted, like I said, Mecklenburg and Gaston County, and they use a company, I believe, called Pet Data, and I've had some initial contact with them, and it, it's administered third-party, and that they send the notices out, they collect the monies. It's a cost-sharing basis where the county receives income from it. So I think it's something like 60, 40, or 70, 30, 60 goes to the administration, 30% goes back to the county in that neighborhood, but that's, it's under contract. So they have, we have to provide initially a database, which Animal Control has in terms of all the rabies information that comes through them through vets. And it really, from everything that I've talked to those counties, it's been a very, very positive impact, both in terms of helping generate some income to help programs, plus it, it really gives them some sense of control of, of those pet owners.
All right, thank you. Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, Don, when you survey, when you send it out and you get some feedback from that survey, what's going to be your authority to do anything after you receive this information and, and put it in your data? Or are you going to have to go somewhere else to get some authority to do something?
It's very plain, we have no authority to do anything. It all rests with you folks, and any recommendations that we bring back is going to be county commissioners-driven decisions. All we can do is advise. So, and that's what we're trying to do, is to advise what problems are and some possible solutions to the problems.
Okay, so that's the purpose of the survey?
That's the purpose of the survey.
Is just to build data to come back to us?
Exactly.
All right, thank you. Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, not a question, but his last, next to last question. I get no last question. He'd probably come back to us for money to do whatever, so. The couple of questions.
Well, I think if we, if, for example, if it comes back, the survey says that they, the citizens of Burke County support pet licensing to some degree, we would have to come back, we would have to get a proposal from like Pet Data, whatever, to bring it back to the county for you guys to, folks to decide whether you wanted to have that program in effect.
All right, other questions, comments? All right, well, thank you for what you guys are doing, and we appreciate it, appreciate the information.
Folks, have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Without objection, this item will remain on the agenda. Thank you. Item seven and eight comes from the Tax Department, but recognize our tax administrator, Danny Eisenhower, for these two items. First one being release refund report, Danny.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The first is the release refund report. And I'll just give you the numbers. The report shows $7,565.76. There was $3,109.45 rebuild, so we had a net release of $4,456.31. There are refunds in the amount of $4,067.07, and then vehicle tax refunds in the amount of $271.86.
All right, thank you, Danny. Gentlemen, you have these reports in front of you. Any questions to Danny on this report? Here and then, we'll move on then to the tax collection report, Danny.
Yes. Okay, tax collections, year-to-date through, through the end of the month. For property tax, we were at 65.86% collected. Motor vehicles, 27.78%, which gives us a combined of current year taxes of 62.06%. Delinquent taxes, we're at 31.63%, and late-list penalties, we are at 28.97%.
Thank you, Danny. Any questions for Danny on this item?
One quick question. Danny, is year-over-year, is that, are we pretty much in the ballpark?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll be, I mean, I can, I can put together a.
Pair of analysis.
Yeah, if you so desire.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Danny. Without objection, item seven and eight will remain on the consent agenda.
Thank you, gentlemen.
This brings us to item number six, items for decision. Have one item on the decision agenda, and that's from BDI Funding for Housing, direct position to address housing. Yeah, that'll be presented by Alan Wood, our BDI chairman. Good afternoon, Alan.
Hello, gentlemen. Madam Clerk, Mr. Attorney. This is a continuation of our housing effort that dates back to last August when we held the Housing Summit. Between that time, we've continued to meet. There is a housing assessment that we should have a final report back on maybe this week. The preliminary report came in, and we asked them to make some changes. There's some fairly interesting data in there that I can share a little bit on. The report showed that we need approximately 2,800 housing units between now and the end of 2022. That's rental and single-family dwellings. Based on what I can gather, how many product, how much product is in the pipeline, how many building permits were pulled over a year, projecting that forward, my best estimate is if things remain the same, something doesn't change, we're probably going to end up with 1,200 to 1,400 of those 2,800 needed units that will be available in that timeline. That's a big gap. It's not just us, it's, it's a gap that's across the area, it's across the state, but I, I don't think that we need or can afford to just sit on the sideline and not try to respond. So what I am projecting, or what I'm proposing, is that we create the development of housing the same way that we do the development of our industrial, industrial base, and that is that we're actively working to recruit builders and developers to come into a market that is largely ignored from the outside builders. That happens because we are not considered to be a, a primary market or even a secondary market. A lot of places were a tertiary market, and so we have to do something different. This proposed position would be working with our local communities to identify properties and following up on leads on developers who have expressed an interest or who we may find to, to develop in the area. I currently probably have, I know of at least six that I've worked with, two of those were here just last week, and we are making some progress, but this is not what I do day-to-day, and it just sort of fills in around the edges when, when I have the time to do it, because my primary goal is the recruitment of industrial clients and expansion of those. Why am I so concerned? Because, you know, you can look at the unemployment rate and see that we are up against it as far as workers go. We don't have enough people just coming through the pipeline, even if we're wildly successful in filling that pipeline up with workers. We don't have enough looking at the ages of our population without recruiting new workers in. Can't recruit new workers if I don't have a place for them to live. So that's, that's why I think this is so important. What I propose is this is a two-year position. I've asked for $75,000 a year. This would be a contract position. I can find qualified people. I have three that I have discussed this with who are very interested in the balance of the money over what I would pay them contract would be used in the marketing of this effort. I have put it out to a similar funding strategy as to the proportions that are funded to BDI at the current timeline and breaking it down based on the county's population to those funding partners. And all, and I've asked them to consider this between now and November, depending on how it falls on their meeting calendar.
Thank you, Alan. Any questions for Alan on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, Alan, what do we, how do we handle the 3,000 vacant units that are in the county right now? And I know a lot of them are older, two-bedroom, one-bath units or whatever, but what, how do we handle that? I mean, are we just encourage people to tear them down or what?
I can, looking at, I mean, what we're looking at are marketable properties, and at the date this report was initially sent to us, which was the end of April, houses that were actually listed for sale was approximately 250 units. At the end of July, from the MLS, Multiple Listing Service, there were 168 units that were actually in the hands of realtors in Burke County. So that's what, I mean, there are, a lot of those vacant units were second homes, vacation homes.
Gaston family?
Yeah, and, and, and then there are some substandard ones, and that's a, you know, that, I think that's an entire different discussion, and I don't really have a handle on, on what to do about that. What I'm looking at are just the number of units that are available for sale and for rent. I didn't mention, but we are 98% on our rental units. That's across the board. So in essence, there are no rental units, houses or apartments in the county.
Mr. Chairman, Wayne asked part of my question at some, where they told us we had 3,000 available places for rent or buying in Burke County, and I think that all of us, you know, where we live, when I, there has been a couple houses sold in the last three months close to where I live, and there's still one that's been there, it's right across from East Burke School. It's from the middle school. It's been vacant, I guess, three or four months now. It's been vacant, I guess, three or four months now, but I think my question is, it would've been nice, I would like to know what exactly the timetable and the job description, that would be two questions, and the third question, if I understand your proposal, do you have funds to support this employee from BDI, or are you requesting Burke County to do this?
I am requesting that the funding come from the partners that currently fund us. We do have a fund balance, that is set up to cover our current work, and a portion of that, we had a capital campaign, those funds that are pledged are not guaranteed, so if I fund this out of fund balance, then it takes away from the current work that I have already scheduled to do. This is an add-on on top of what we are, what I'm proposing is that we create a new initiative that is not currently funded from any of the sources that I have. Now, I'll go back home to the, to the 3,000 units. Just because they're vacant does not mean, does not mean that they are available in the market or that they are suitable. I'll give you an example. At the end of, I think it was as of last week, I was looking at number of houses that are on the market, now, these are houses that are listed for sale, these with realtors across the county. There were 31 houses in the Burke County market at $150,000 or less, 31 units, that's it, out of a population of 90,000 people at under $150,000. I mean, that's, so they have to be on the market for them to be available, you know, being vacant does not mean they're available for sale.
Other questions?
Yes, follow-up, if you will, please. We, at the presentation we were at last night about the Broughton Hospital, and that's one question I didn't ask about the hotel downtown. They are forecasting a motel hotel there, and how many residences? It was a rental unit with lots of homes in it, and I think one of the things we need to include, obviously, that's going to fulfill some of the needs for housing for Burke County. I don't have a timetable, I asked for that last night, they didn't, they didn't give a timetable, so if I understand, back to your proposal, is that if we have nothing to sell, what is this individual going to do? Is he going to solicit buyers? Is he going to build houses or construct houses, or?
There are lots that are available in the community that are not built upon. The builders that we have are building everything that they can build, but the, for instance, I am aware of one subdivision that has 42, 41 or 42 available lots, that's been sitting there since 2009. What I'm proposing that this individual do is to create a spreadsheet on not just this property but others, identify, and we've already been working to identify areas where multifamily units can go, and then go and recruit builders and/or developers from outside or inside this market to fulfill this need. It would include, part of that proposed property around the Broughton project could be included in this, but those are not going, I mean, this is not happening right now. There's not a single entity anywhere in the county or any of the communities that is tasked with identifying or addressing the gap that we are seeing develop because of the good things that are going on in the community. It's because of the school of science and math, the opening of a new hospital, the National Guard Armory, the jobs that were created, have announced, all those are wonderful, wonderful things, but if, if the school of science and math, if they started hiring tomorrow, those folks wouldn't have a place to live. I mean, so we lose a lot of the impact of creating those jobs if they're not living here in the community, because they're going to shock where they live, and so, you know, to me, it has a domino effect of moving forward. To give you an idea, if we're, you know, my projection is over this, over the timeline, we, our goal would be to hopefully get three or 400 new units, apartments or houses, because you're looking at about $450,000 in new tax base, if those average $150,000 per unit. So, you know, I'm looking at a return on investment, but I'm also looking at long-term growth potential for the county to address the situation that we need population growth to continue to sustain what the energy that we have.
Well, Mr. Chairman, one other side note, if you will, please. 2,000-square-foot house now is running over $300,000. And how many of $300,000 houses, even if we had this individual, could we possibly instruct in a year, year-and-a-half time period?
We, we're not necessarily looking at, the numbers that we see for the projected area, the real growth area, is going to be 175 to 250,000 dollars, it's not a $300,000 home. So you're looking at, you know, there, they could be smaller homes with zero lot lines, where you have utilities, 12 to 1500 square feet, apartments that are renting under $1,000, and those are the areas, these are not subsidized units, but these are units that are for workforce-level housing for the worker, the jobs that we are creating and the jobs that we project to create.
Did the, ask you a gentleman a question, Brian, you may know the answer. They announced a big incentive for Mecklenburg coming up with a big bunch of money to aid in building houses. Will part of that money be designated to other counties, or do we know, will there be grant money available for construction where counties have housing problems?
I'm not aware of that, that that may be more the... That was just a Mecklenburg County.
I know, but they were talking other county, they mentioned it being allowed at other counties which met a certain...
Well, that, I think they had a bond referendum, and that's what was going to fund that. I mean, other communities could do a similar thing, but the funding that, if it's the same thing that I saw, it was just for Mecklenburg County.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
One quick question, Alan, other economic development entities throughout the state, other counties, do they have similar positions, or do you see this, we're just kind of on the cutting edge, we're, we've got to take...
No one else is taking this task, or trying to take on this task in this manner. I was at a, I went to a conference in Silva two weeks, three weeks ago, and they had a very similar discussion with no details on how they're going to address it. I'll give you an idea. Harris Casino in Cherokee's getting ready to add additional rooms. They're 200 employees short right now, they're going to need an additional 600 employees. They don't have a clue where those people are going to come from. They don't have a clue, and they don't have a plan. There, I guess it's the sit and hope and wish initiative, and, you know, it's, it would be one thing if we're looking at our market, and they could live in a surrounding area, but Caldwell and Catawba are in a very similar situation as to what we are. I don't know that this is a perfect solution. I have looked out for areas who are doing creative things, and it's just really, it is a very difficult undertaking, and there's no guarantees that we're going to be successful, but if we just leave it to our own devices, then we know, you know, I'm pretty sure what the results of that are going to be, is that this gap is just going to remain where it is.
Well, I definitely think we need it. I think I'd rather have a plan, give it a try, instead of looking back two or three years from now and saying, wow, we had an opportunity to do something, we didn't do it, and so, you know, I think it's a good idea, it's much needed. Obviously, being married to a realtor, I know exactly how tight the supply is out there as far as housing, so we're kind of hitting critical mass, so.
If a house goes on the market now, and this is sort of anecdotal data, if something goes on the market and it's in a reasonable area and reasonably decent condition, between 175 and 225,000 dollars, those houses are generally sold in a matter of hours with multiple offers above the asking price.
Mr. Chairman, Alan, this individual, we actually could probably use him to market, say, a Rutherford College Elementary School property or a Chesterfield Elementary School property, and invite construction architects to come in and take those properties now that are not viable for anything, and turn those into apartments or something like that? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, I mean, what we, what we think is, some of the things that are rolling around in my mind are, we already have ties to a lot of individuals, engineers, architects, that are working in the communities or with the county, let's leverage them to help make contacts, we leverage properties that we know are available, there are two schools that were recently closed, could those be developed as housing? We mentioned the Broughton Campus, Community College has some property there that could be developed as residential. There are other areas, you know, could we create a plan on those? Could we also, one of the things we've, I've batted around is, can we create a pool of funds from local investors? That is currently not happening. You know, there are a lot of different moving parts to this that could be developed over time. I don't have all the answers in front of me, I think I, you know, identified sort of what this person will be and what they're going to be doing, but there's still some things that we'll have to, you know, some of it we're going to learn as we go, just because I don't have a template to go by.
Let me ask you one more thing. Would you have any real heartburn if we decide, if it came to, this is the big if, if it was voted in these entities and we provided the money for the position, would you have any heartburn to have oversight by the county manager, the city managers, and instead of having the BDI board as the oversight, would you have any heartburn having the managers from each of these entities being the oversight since we're providing money, if we provided the money?
I don't, I mean, they're already on the board, so I have no problem with that. We can set up a subset however we want to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions, comments? I just kind of roll back in around to Wayne's theme there just a little bit. We do have thousands of vacant residences on the, many of them not usable, and I do think that we as a county need to consider what we can do to, if anything, to incent folks to demolish some of these places that are just sitting around, running down, there's just trash heaps all over the county in lots of different forms. I don't know, maybe we can...
I have some ideas on that, but that's sort of a different discussion for a different day, maybe.
It is a different discussion, but I hope that we can kind of bring that up the chain just a little bit, because we need to deal with some of this stuff.
And I don't think all 3,000 of them are, saying we need to tear them down or whatever, like, or nice three, one brick comes with, you know...
Needs serious updating, maybe.
Yeah, well, I'm not saying they're all ready for the landfill, but my, my travels and my work, I see a huge numbers of them that need just to be demolished or removed one way or the other.
Mr. Chairman, you just opened the door for me to piggyback on what you said, since I live on them. Everybody knows I mow about 19 acres along my road that I shouldn't mow to keep my property and everybody else's property looking good, and Wayne, one of those buildings sits on the end of the road up there, and much as we hate to, one of these days, we're going to have to look at some, changing some ordinances that says you got to do something with your property eventually, because they sit there and they become, to me, they become health hazards and fire hazards. I'm finished.
Any other question, comment? All right, here none, this item will remain on the Decision Agenda. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
This brings us to item number seven, Reports. I'll remind you that if you have reports that need to be in the agenda packet for our regular meeting, please get those to the clerk by October the 8th, so that she can have them ready and prepared for us. I don't have any other items on the agenda for discussion. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this regular meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. And unless there's objection, we'll let the county manager make a stop, but we'll, I'll entertain a motion to call to order our special meeting, which was designed at 4:00, and I have such high hopes, Madam Clerk, that we'd be ahead of all that, but obviously, that's not happening, so I'll entertain a motion to come to order and approve the agenda for the special meeting. Thank you, Wayne. Those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Well, Danny, you've waited long and hard, and you've run everybody off except for the news report, and one or two other folks, so this must be an exciting presentation that we're about to hear.
You got it.
With that, we will entertain a Tax Department adoption of the 2019 Schedule of Values and Present Use Schedule of Values. Danny.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you. Basically, you've got the information in your packet, I'm just going to go over a couple things that we do here. This is sort of step three for the Commissioners in the adoption of the 2019 Schedule of Values for Market Value and for the 2019 Schedule of Values for Present Use Value. These were presented on September the 4th at that meeting. September the 18th, we conducted a public hearing, which there was no one to speak, best I can remember, and today, I'm requesting the Board to adopt both of these schedules as presented.
All right, thank you, Danny. Gentlemen, we've had all this information, we had a presentation last month, and you've had the time to see all this. Any questions for Danny as it relates to Schedule of Values and Present Use Schedule of Values? Here none, I'll entertain a motion on this item. All right. Yes. Okay, gentlemen, you have the motions in front of you to adopt the Schedule of Values for Use in 2019 Revaluation of Real Property in Burke County effective January the 1st, 2019, and also to adopt the Present Use Schedule of Values for Use in the 2019 Revaluation of Real Property in Burke County effective January 19. All those in favor, please signify, they're up in the air. Those opposed? Madam Clerk, that is four to one. With that being said, for the official record, I will declare the 2019 Schedule of Values and the Present Use Schedule of Values were duly adopted effective January the 1st, 2019. This brings us to item number four, Closed Session. Gentlemen, we do have need for a closed session to discuss economic development matters and personnel matters as they may relate to the county. Entertain a motion to go into closed session. Thank you, Manny. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. All right. All right, thank you, we didn't have a proper motion to come out of closed session, and we've returned to session here. and we've returned to session here. Yeah, there was no action taken in closed session. However, we do need to make one correction on the vote for Schedule of Values, yes, here they are. During the vote, I thought Commissioner Taylor's vote was no, however, it was just late and, or a little bit later than others, and I saw it that way. However, he's advised and will correct that to show that he voted in favor for the Schedule of Values. Madam Clerk, five to seven. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you Wayne, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no.